We call the Marathon County Board of Supervisors to order, please. We will still start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing. Following the Pledge of Allegiance, will it be a silent moment of reflection?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principles for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will have the reading of the notice, please.
The adjourned annual meeting of the Marathon County Board of Supervisors, composed of 38 members, will convene at the Marathon County Courthouse Assembly Room, 504th Street, Wausau, on Tuesday, March 21st, at 7:00 PM, and the agenda will be duly signed and posted.
Thank you. I would like to request everyone, please silence their cellphones and any other electronic devices as not to be an interruption to the meeting, and I thank you for your compliance. We will proceed to roll call. Please sign in. All right. I would like to welcome all of the visitors that we have with us this evening, including the viewing audience, and thank you for your interest in Marathon County government. I will make a note that item number H-18 from the Executive Committee, the update on the strategic plan, is going to be pulled from the agenda. There was an issue that items, objectives 5.2 and objective 6.3, that were approved by the Environmental Resources Committee, were not included in the packet that the Executive Committee reviewed. They did review them on November 10th, but did not take official action, and they were not in the packet today, and so they will be reviewed by the Executive Committee during its April Executive Committee meeting. If any individuals have issues with the strategic plan and want to have their voice heard, please, by all means, attend the Executive Committee next month. With that, we will move on to education, presentation, and reports by standing committee chairpersons or designees. What is your pleasure? Any chairpersons or designees? Any reports? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Items C-8 through items C-13A. What is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Jeong and seconded by Supervisor Robinson. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Motion to approve by Supervisor Jeong, Supervisor Robinson. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed to vote. Supervisor Boots, indeed, your vote. I'll take your vote verbally. And you may have to take yourself off of mute.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you get that, Kurt?
I've got that. Aye, Supervisor Boots. And the motion is carried and is unanimous. Thank you. We will move on to the ordinances. Items D-14, from Human Resources, Finance and Property Committee and the Executive Committee, the creation of the Marathon County Energy Task Force. And that is item D-14A. What is your pleasure? Motion by Supervisor Lahey and seconded by Supervisor Robinson. Supervisor Sandalsky.
Yeah, I just had a little comment to make on this committee. First off, looking at this Energy Task Force paperwork, I do not see any clear and concise goals or objectives for forming this committee. Secondly, I must look at whether this committee can be a positive benefit to the people who serve here in District 25. This benefit could be in two forms. One, in which it could be a decrease in their tax levy to the county taxpayer, or secondly, an increase in their service. I honestly do not see either benefits within the plans of this committee. After all that is going on within our corporate wind farm land grab, I cannot burn my people anymore. I cannot, with a clear conscience, vote in favor of this committee. Third, last year, we had to borrow $400,000 from our ARPA fund to pay for the natural gas, as stated in this committee's paperwork. Is there, my question to the committee here, or the formation of this committee, is there a plan to reduce the energy consumption so we don't have to borrow money again to complete our energy for the year? Lastly, I believe we can work together as a county board to reduce our tax levy to the peoples, and also the standing committees would be a great plan to start finding ways to reduce our energy consumption within the county. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Kraus is next.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. In the previous meeting, I mentioned about certain committees that were not mentioned in the number of committees people from those committees could be on the task force, and I was wondering if you could clarify that, because one supervisor said, well, anybody from, you know, any of the supervisors from any of the committees could be in the Energy Task Force. But yet, the way it's written in the resolution, it seems that only those people from those committees can be on the Energy Task Force. I was wondering if you could clarify that, please.
I'd just ask for clarification from Corp Counsel, and the way I, he, I'll let him explain his answer to my question and your question, Supervisor.
Sure. The way I read the membership portion of the Energy Task Force ordinance would be that the five county board supervisors would have to come from those listed committees, so they couldn't come from a non-listed committee.
And could I ask why just those committees were designated to have supervisors from those committees and not from any others?
And I would have to look to the Chair of the HR Finance Committee and possibly the recommending authority of the charter. Supervisor Robinson, please.
I'll try to answer that question and address other issues that were raised. The committees were chosen because of their role in directly associated with programs or facilities that have energy consumption. For instance, Health and Human Services was not involved, because generally, those are based on programs versus facilities. And this actually stemmed from a discussion that the administrator had at one of our meetings in an effort to try to make sure that we were involving those committees and/or programs where there was a direct relationship, for instance, Human Resource, Finance and Property, because of the property and the budget, Environmental Resources, because of their reporting relationship with parks, and other infrastructure, because of the roads, and others, education, extension, education, economic development. I'm not even sure why we put that in there, but it was done for a reason, solid waste, because of the issue that we had with the gas earlier in the year. Park Commission, they own, you know, control of forests, you know, Forest Recreation Committee. We have the parks. They're both consumers of significant amounts of energy and others. It wasn't meant to be necessarily exclusive, and I think the Chair has indicated that he would take an open view if there were people that were interested in serving, but there was a relationship of the functions of those committees relative to the mission of the task force as to why they were delineated. I would like to just address the initial comments that were made relative to borrowing from ARPA. We don't borrow from ARPA. We allocate resources from the American Rescue Plan Act for expenditures. Last year, we allocated approximately $400,000 because of the significant increase in natural gas prices. Those were driven by the economy and a number of factors and are not likely to go down. And when you look at what are we trying to accomplish here, the purpose is to maximize efficiencies and capitalize on other incentives to try to make us more energy efficient. It is an internally focused work group. There are opportunities to look at LED lighting, to look at operational efficiencies of boilers, to look at whether or not there are opportunities for us to use solar or other alternative energy supplies with the new bipartisan infrastructure law. There are credits that are, for the first time ever, available to local units of government. We can't sustain our current, our energy use from a budgeting perspective, and so the reason for the creation of the task force is to try to look at opportunities that present themselves and make recommendations to this body, both for this year's budget and for future years, to try to get a better handle or control on our energy costs as it relates to the operation of the counties. Things like LED lightings in parking lots at Marathon Park, or how do we, what do we do at Big O Plane or Eau Claire Dell's? Are there opportunities for us to become more efficient? Are there more energy-efficient vehicles that we can look at from a fleet perspective? Are there different ways of providing some of the services? Are there boilers that are old and outdated that could be impacted positively or if they're replaced? We have a tendency not to always be the most far-looking entity when it comes to our energy policy, and this is just an effort to try to bring people together to look for opportunities and develop recommendations to this body on how we can do things better and avoid that cliff that we'll run into. If we keep using ARPA dollars, we'll have those through 2026. We won't have them on July 1st of 2027. So we're going to need to find either an alternative source of revenue or realize some cost savings in how we're performing operationally as it relates to energy use. That's why the task force is before you today, to avoid that cliff, to look for some sound policies, take advantage of changes in federal subsidies, and hopefully deliver a more efficient county government, so the citizens of the county aren't, you know, we can't raise taxes beyond levy limits, but we can protect other programs.
Okay. We have Supervisor Baker next.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. I have a question and then a comment. The question is, does this require a majority vote or two-thirds vote since we're changing an ordinance?
This is a simple majority vote.
Okay. Thank you. So, as I was looking at the task force, I reflected back on my career, and I've spent probably 15,000 hours of my career on energy projects, with basically two-thirds of that has probably been renewable energy. So I'm a strong proponent of renewable energy, and I'm for our county looking at opportunities. But as I look at the timeline, I think it's too aggressive. It's not realistic, and I, with my personal situation, I just don't have time to volunteer help with this. Otherwise, I would have liked to have participated in even the development of the task force, but I just can't from a time standpoint. So I am going to vote no, but I would like to see HR Finance look at this just internally as a HR Finance Committee and look at if there's things with the CIP. I know Chair Gibbs had suggested that in private industry, there are projects that would get funded based on payback, and I think that we should be changing our CIP program to do that, so that we, you can bring energy reduction projects forward, and with payback, you know, that would be more favorably received by the board, I would think. So I'm all for renewable energy. I'm all for looking at energy savings. I just think with the housing that we're looking at, childcare, all the other priorities we have on the board right now, that this is just a little too much for us to take on. So, thank you.
Supervisor Shafensky.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the people who worked to create the idea of an Energy Task Force. I think a lot of good work has gone into it. Excuse me. I do agree with Supervisor Baker's observation that perhaps the timeline might be overly aggressive. Things get to be a little bit more complex than what we think sometimes, but that's not always bad. However, having said that, and I think the goals are laudable, I think they're good. However, I cannot in good conscience vote to extend or create more bureaucracy within the county. The way that I would like to see this handled is we already have a committee structure. We have the HR Property Committee. They can delegate, and I would like to see this delegated back through the appropriate owners of the building, the various departments, and given marching orders, if you will, that this is one of the things that you're going to do this year, is look for, fill in the blank, 5%, 10%, 15%, whatever that number seems to be reasonable, of energy savings, whether you want to say BTUs, dollars, however you want to couch that, but I don't see the need for yet another task force. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Marash.
Thank you, Chair. So with the HR Finance and Property meeting today, it was discussed about the $550 million for an Energy and Efficiency Block program, and that Marathon County is eligible for $78,000 based on our size. So we have not accepted that money yet. We want to figure out what we're going to allocate that for. Once that's done, and if we do approve this task force, is the goal then to be able to apply for more of that $550 million question?
Supervisor Robinson?
I don't know. It's a 78, Marathon County is eligible to receive a $78,300 grant through the Energy Community Development Block Grant. That was the issue before us today, and the issue of acceptance. We didn't have enough information on how that might be used, so we delayed final action on it, but that is a component of it. I think what we would want to do is evaluate that Community Development Block Grant and whether or not there are opportunities for us to submit a competitive application that might be funded. You know, we've used Focus on Energy grants. We've used other things. At the Metropolitan Planning Organization, there recently were proposals for the city to put in energy-efficient LED lighting. There were proposals from Weston and Rip Mountain to do electric vehicles on their fleet. There are a number of things that we could look at. I think one of the reasons you create the task force is there are some policy issues associated with it. It's not just operational, and we would look for that committee to look at those policy-related issues and develop those recommendations for the board. But I can't answer, will we go after that Community Development Block Grant more of those funds at this time, just not knowing all of the details of what would be an eligible cost? I think that's one of the things we would want to look at.
Just a follow-up. So...
From what I understand, also, as part of that $550 is already allocated to direct recipients, and some of it is up for competitive grant, and so it would be, you know, at some point, a future recommendation as to whether or not we go after competitive, the portion that potentially is under competitive grants.
So with having these different task forces, is that one of the prerequisites or having some kind of a plan in place in order for you to apply for other grants that become available?
The answer to that would be no. There wouldn't be a requirement that the task force be created to do that. Okay. Supervisor Langenhahn.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Is there objection? Is there an objection to question being called? Okay. There's no objection. Then we will proceed to vote on, I do understand Supervisor Overbeck is in the queue, but we'll need to vote on whether or not we're just continuing to leave the queue open. As soon as I'm done, once we have a vote, then we'll come back and pick up anybody that's in the queue, in this case, Supervisor Overbeck. Is there a second on the question being called? Seconded by Supervisor Rosenberg. Okay. There's no debate. It is not debatable. It does require a two-thirds majority vote. So those in favor of question being called and ending debate on the creation of the Energy Task Force, proceed to vote. Just to hold off on voting, the clerk has to enter the motion in on the open meetings software. Okay. Now we will proceed to vote. Yes vote will terminate if you have two-thirds, and no vote will continue debate. Supervisor Boots, how do you vote on the motion of question being called?
I've been muted the whole, I've been muted the whole time, so I couldn't get in queue if I wanted to. I've been trying to.
Okay.
It's fine.
So how do you choose to vote on the question being called? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Opal, you are on. How do you choose to vote on question being called?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll proceed, and the motion is carried. Debate is ended. Now we will go to Supervisor Overbeck.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. I just wanted to say, there is a huge initiative that's going on nationwide with AI, well, not AI 3, but the energy as far as the year 2030, and I think Marathon County is way behind as far as looking at this. There are incredible resources out there, and I think it's time for this, not necessarily this Energy Task Force coming up with a plan by this fall, but to continue the discussion on energy, because what's happening around us is any new building is being designed with geothermal photovoltaic cells. I'm working on one personally to a municipality to the east of here. The buildings, they're putting in electric vehicle chargers. They're doing everything they can to reduce their energy usage, knowing that it's only going to get more expensive. So I think it's worthy of having an Energy Task Force to bring back information to this board and start making some decisions. We've got a highway department coming up. We've got different facilities that really need that guidance, and I think there's a lot of resources right now. There's a lot of money out there to incorporate energy savings equipment or facilities. So I think it would be wise for Marathon County to look at this and really put forth a group that can evaluate only energy and look at the different committees or give them tasks to look at how they might move forward into the year 2030. But that is the nationwide goal, is to have a plan by 2030 and start incorporating all of the needs to address our energy consumption. So I would recommend that the board form this task force, and it may have a different, after it gets formed, it may have a different direction as far as what to bring forth, educating the board, and also looking at initiatives that it can take, and also funding that may become available to the county. So I'd recommend to move forward with it. Thank you.
Okay. We are now at the point, everyone that was in the queue has been recognized, and so we will proceed to vote. A vote of yes will create the task force. A vote of no will not create the task force. Again, it is a simple majority vote. And we are ready. We'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Boots?
Yes.
Supervisor Opal? Supervisor Opal, you're still on mute? Oh, you just muted yourself. Now you're on.
Okay. Yeah, yes, yes is my vote.
Yes is your vote. Thank you, Supervisor. And we'll proceed, and the motion is carried. Thank you. We'll move on to the resolutions from the Environmental Resources Committee. A Resolution of Support for the Salt Pollution Prevention, DEICER Application Certification and DEICER Application Liability Protection, Resolution R-13-23. What is your pleasure? Motion by Vice Chair McEwen and seconded by Supervisor Ritter. Is there Supervisor Sandalsky? Before we get to that, I would like to provide some answers to some questions that were raised on Thursday's meeting that is coming from the CPZ Department, and let me just pull those up. Laurie, CPZ Director is with us, so I'd ask her to provide the responses to those questions that you had provided in email. I'm not able to locate those at this time.
Okay. Hold on just a second. Okay. Thank you, Chairman Gibbs. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So the two questions we took away from Thursday's meeting that we wanted to make sure we provided responses to, the first was regarding the DNR certification program. Could the DNR change its requirements as to how a person or company qualifies for that certification in the future? Would any such change at all bind or impact the county? And our answer to that question was, the county is not bound by the certification requirements in this bill, since it does not apply to counties. The bill is written, applies to individual commercial applicators and not counties. If they wanted to extend this certification to counties, that would require further legislation. Also, the bill states that the program for the individual commercial applicators will be voluntary, so we just wanted to emphasize that again, that it is, it's voluntary participation if this program is created. The second question, is there a cost associated with becoming a certified DEICER applicator? The proposed Bill 52 does not specify a fee. If a fee is established, the fee will be determined by the DNR, and again, participation in the program would be voluntary if it was created, so anyone who is voluntarily choosing to participate in that program would have to pay a fee if it was, in fact, established by the DNR, but they wouldn't be forced to participate in the program.
Thank you so very much, Laurie. And now we'll proceed with discussion. Supervisor Sandalsky.
Yeah, I got a question to kind of piggyback on my last statement. It's probably direct towards the infrastructure. Has there ever been any research looked into discontinuing salt and placed, used sand in place of salt? It could be maybe possibly more cost-effective for the county. Also, it would be more environmentally friendly for the groundwater and environment-wise. Like our western states have used, have been using sand for a long, long time. I just, maybe somebody from the Infrastructure Committee, just questioning whether that was, because it kind of relates to that. I just questioned that. And our answer to that question was, the county is not bound by the certification requirements in this bill since it does not apply to counties. The bill is written, applies to individual commercial applicators and not counties. If they wanted to extend this certification to counties, that would require further legislation. Also, the bill states that the program for the individual commercial applicators will be voluntary, so we just wanted to emphasize that again, that it is, it's voluntary participation if this program is created. The second question, is there a cost associated with becoming a certified de-icer applicator? The proposed Bill 52 does not specify a fee. If a fee is established, the fee will be determined by the DNR. And again, participation in the program would be voluntary if it was created, so anyone who is voluntarily choosing to participate in that program would have to pay a fee if it was in fact established by the DNR, but they wouldn't be forced to participate in the program.
Thank you so very much, Laurie. And now we'll proceed with discussion. Supervisor Sandalsky.
Yeah, I got a question, and kind of piggyback on my last statement. This is probably direct towards the infrastructure. Has there ever been any research looked into discontinuing salt and placed, used sand in place of salt? Could be made possibly more cost-effective for the county. Also, it would be more environmentally friendly for the groundwater and environment-wise. Like our western states have used, have been using sand for a long, long time. I just, maybe somebody from the Infrastructure Committee, just questioning whether that was, because it kind of relates to that. I just question that to someone in Infrastructure. Thank you.
Vice Chair McEwen, go ahead and please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As, as far as I can recall, there hasn't been any discussion about solely using sand. There's a mixture sometimes. If it's, if the temperature's right, the salt works a lot better than sand. It will not melt the ice on the roads. But the brine has been discussed, and there is an effort to reduce the amount of salt that the highway department is using, which they have already. But there's never been a discussion just completely going with sand. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Boots, and then Supervisor-
Yes.
Aye. Supervisor Opal?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Thank you. We'll move on to Item F, Human Resources, Finance and Property Committee, Health and Human Services Committee. Item F-16, approving the 2023 budget transfers from Marathon County Department of Appropriations, Resolution 14-23, the Dream Up Grant. And this does require a two-thirds majority. We have a motion by Supervisor Leahy, and seconded by Supervisor Marash. Any discussion? Supervisor Lamont.
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a question on the 12 $5,000 grants. How are they going to determine which childcare providers will get those? Thank you.
I guess I would open that question up to the administrator. I know he serves on that committee. I know that was a question that was initially asked, or partially asked, at HR Finance, and also if it was going to be for childcare centers in Marathon County. And the answer, as far as is it going to be for Marathon County childcare centers? And the answer is yes, but the criteria, administrator?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, Supervisor Lamont. The reason that the funds are being sub-allocated essentially through this grant to child caring is that they have two things that the group thought were very important to consider when these funds were being allocated. One, they have a very strong understanding of the local childcare environment within Marathon County. And you'll see from the presentation that was in your packet, the materials, you know, that kind of local environment has been one where we've had a significant exodus of providers and a significant loss of slots over the last more than decade. So they really understand the struggles of childcare providers, both at the family care, the family childcare level and the center level. And then secondly, they're very, they have a very strong understanding of the limitations that are placed on the allocation of those funds by the state of Wisconsin that we have received through the Dream Up Grant opportunity. So they're going to essentially being, going to solicit applications for the utilization of those funds. As set forth on page 62 of your packet, those funds are going to be targeted to first and foremost, aid with staff retention. But then also, under the grant, there are program supplies and equipment or minor renovations that can be eligible expenses. So child caring is going to develop those, the criteria, if any, are necessary to determine whether or not we'll have to weigh individual applications against each other. My hope is that we have that problem, that we have enough childcare providers that are requesting those funds. However, we don't know as of yet if we will have more than the 12 providers put forward an application for those funds.
Okay, Supervisor Van Cray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I asked the same question in one of the Dream Up meetings of child caring, because one of my concerns was the county has a few very large and very successful childcare centers. And in, in my determination, it felt like this money should be going to childcare providers that are in need of it and not necessarily the biggest and most successful. And child caring did assure me that criteria would be set forth, that it would go to providers who needed the money.
Okay, any other discussion? Supervisor Shaffinsky.
Thank you, Chair. I happen to have a pretty good understanding, going back a number of years, of the childcare situation. And I understand the complexities involved, both among why we've dropped the number of slots, licensed versus unlicensed, the difficulty in getting good, qualified people as workers and then retaining them. It's a very complex situation. My concern is that here we have a governmental body, the county board, who's going to be in the business of picking and choosing winners and losers in business. And we should not be doing that. That is not the function of the county board or the county to be picking and choosing winners and losers in business in Marathon County. The other thing is that, as much as we, we want to do something, I'm not sure that I feel that it is our place as a governmental body to get involved in providing childcare or providing the, the funding for it directly in this regard. Finding ways to get out of the way of childcare centers or providers who are wishing to do business in the terms of reducing regulation or making it easier to, to be successful? Absolutely. But when we're getting in the business of distributing money, that's beyond the purview of this board. Thank you.
Supervisor Crowsey.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to, just like to say that single parents and divorced parents really have a need for childcare, and so do the people who want to be employed full-time. They really need someone to watch their children, and their grandmother or their mother is not always available to be a babysitter. And I think $43,500 is just a drop in the bucket. If you divide that by 10 people who are asking for that money or requesting that money, that's only $4,000 per childcare center, which is not much when you consider what they need for a whole year. So if the amount was 143,000, I would be a little happier about it. And I'd like to see that there might be other avenues where childcare centers could access more money in Marathon County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. Supervisor Boots?
Aye.
And Supervisor Opal?
Yes.
Okay, we'll proceed. And the motion is carried. Thank you. We will proceed to Item G, G-17, adoption of the timeline for the 2024 budget process, resolution 15-23. Motion by Leahy, and seconded by Supervisor Marash. Oops, excuse me, disregard. Now, a motion by Leahy and Vice Chair McEwen with the second. Any discussion? Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you. The Human Resources, Finance and Property Committee met earlier today and there were, placed this item on the agenda, and came up with a recommendation to remove any reference to Committee of the Hall and replace it with County Board Educational Meeting. There was confusion over the rules governing committees of the hall and operational, operational how they would function. And in order to clarify, it was just an effort to try to bring the county board together and present that information. So which version is before us tonight? That one? So I wanted to alert you to the Committee of the Hall, based on the committee's recommendation today, has been replaced with the County Board Educational Meeting. And again, let me just, if I can, this is our first effort to do this, and we're going to get hopefully a lot of things right, but we will get some things wrong. We don't know when the state budget will be done. We don't know when we'll get our general transportation aids and shared revenue calculations from the state. So there are a number of external factors dependent upon the state budget that will drive this. I think what we heard at the last meeting was that there was a desire to try to have more time for the county board to interact with it. We will look for opportunities to expand that level of participation within the confines of information that's available. So we will look at some of those end dates in November. We're modeling this after St. Croix County, which is, you know, they talk about August, September. They talk about September. They talk about October. They don't give specific dates. We put specific dates in there to try to give a little bit more certainty to it. We're not going to have, you know, don't look at this as the Bible. There will be some fluctuation. We will try to be as inclusive as possible, but it is sort of a roadmap that we're going to look for. We'll need to occasionally get off to go to that gas station for the pit stop or whatever and make adjustments. We will do our best to keep you informed of any changes that we, we do make. We will need to work with the committee chairs to make sure that they understand the roles of the standing committees in this process, in both priorities, assumptions in the budget itself. But we're hoping that this is, again, a more inclusive process than we've used in the past. And if, if as we're going through it, you're not comfortable with the direction that we're going, please raise those concerns, and we can evaluate those milestones and those timelines. But it's, it's meant to be a guide.
Supervisor Marash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to provide more clarity, what you're proposing is that we start an educational meeting at 4:30 in the afternoon and run until 6:30, and then continue the regular educational meeting from 7 o'clock to whatever time, correct? And then we would continue the discussion the next Tuesday, the voting day, the same way, 4:30 to 6:30, correct?
And, and that would be if it was still needed. In other words, if the information that the, the HR Finance Committee and the administrator, you know, that we've outlined has not been gone through completely, or all the questions answered by this board about, you know, you know, items, you know, what is required statutorily, what is not required statutorily? If that has not been made clear, we will add the, the second meeting on the following Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:30, correct? We have Supervisor Sandalsky next.
I'd just like to thank those working on this budget process. I think it'll be helpful and maybe more informative and not so maybe rushy at the end, so I think it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, we have Supervisor Baker next.
Thank you, Chair Gibbs. So I have a question related to the Friday, October 6th amendments to proposed 2024 budget are due for supervisors for consideration by HR Finance and Property Committee prior to publication. So if there's a proposed amendment on October 6th, and that is, is not recommended or not included by HR Finance, can that amendment then still be presented at the county board?
And the answer to that would be obviously yes. Any amendments are still open to the full board, to be brought to the full board, even though the HR Finance chose not to include it in their finalized budget that they are posting and advertising. But absolutely, any amendment would be open to the full board to be brought forward, even though HR Finance may not, may have chose not to.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll proceed to vote on the motion to approve the timeline for the 2024 budget process. Supervisor Boots?
Aye.
Supervisor Opal?
Aye.
And we will proceed. And the motion is carried, and it is unanimous. Thank you. We are down to Item I, 19 announcements and/or requests. Any announcements and/or requests? Supervisor Crowsey.
Yes, last month was the History of Blacks Month, and this month is Women's History Month. There is a National Women's History Museum that is online, and there are many women firsts in Marathon County, Wisconsin, and the U.S. that maybe if you study, get a chance to read about it, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Willalm.
I was just wondering if we could get an update on what the surplus was from 2022 at some point, or what was left over?
Supervisor Robinson.
We're currently in, in auditing our books. When that audit is done by Baker Tilly, it'll be presented by, to the Finance Committee. We can give you a summary at, at that time. I think that's one of the things we are hoping to cover at that April meeting, you know, in what some of the fund balances are and other things. So we can provide that post-audit.
Supervisor Shaffinsky.
Thank you, Chairman. With respect to that audit, I guess I'm, one, I'm surprised that here we are halfway through Barge, and now we're doing it, and it's still not done, given where we are in the year. I would ask that the results of that be provided to every member of the board. Thank you.
Well, first off, the audit, it takes, before, before we close the books, it's almost the end of January, and this is, is a normal process for the audit to be finished in May or June. So we got Supervisor Langenhahn next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make an announcement, that announcements be announcements and not discussion. Thank you.
Okay, any other announcements? Seeing none, we're down to Item I-20. Motion by Supervisor Langenhahn, seconded by Supervisor Ritter, to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I need-